Mr. Marsh will give the invocation and then we will have Troop 859 lead the pledge.
Lord, as we approach the end of the year, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given to us. As a city, we are grateful for the many events and activities that bring us together as a community. We are thankful for the new amenities, new businesses, and new families that has sprouted as Hilliard has continued to grow this past year. With that gratitude, we also look hopefully to the future for the new opportunities still to come in the way of recreation opportunities, employment opportunities, and most importantly, opportunities to come together as a community. Please guide us in this meeting and guide all those who work so hard in this city every day to make Hilliard the wonderful community that it is. In your name we pray, amen.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Carrier?
Here.
Ms. Cottone?
Here.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Here.
Mr. Teeter?
Here.
Vice President Vermillion?
Here.
President Tarazi?
Here.
Council has copies of the November 27, 2023 Special Executive Section and Regular Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. We will go into Commission Board Reports. Peggy Hale for Board of Zoning Appeals.
No report.
Destination Hilliard?
No report.
Environmental Sustainability Commission, Pete Marsh.
Just a reminder, you don't have to wait for a particular collection after the holidays. Styrofoams collected 24/7, and there are also bins for recycling your Christmas lights right next to the styrofoam shed.
Morpsy?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
We meet this week.
Public Arts Commission, no report. Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission? Lessor, Andy?
No report.
Shade Tree Commission?
We had a meeting this week. It was a good meeting, but we do have one opening, I believe. Two openings that we'll be advertising for new members.
Aging and Place Committee?
We're not having our regular meeting tomorrow. We're having a holiday celebration meeting at Center Street Market.
All right. And no other, that's the end of that one. Recognition. So now we move on to recognition and special guests, and I believe Cynthia is going to take that part.
Well, as you all know, we have two council members who will be going off council at the beginning of the year. So we have a proclamation for President Tarazi, whereas service to one's community as an elected official is a significant investment of time and reflects a personal passion for our city, and whereas representing the diverse needs, desires, and opinions of our residents is key to the success of Hilliard's council manager form of government, and whereas we honor and recognize those who generously give their time and talents in pursuit of the ongoing improvement of our community, and whereas since 2019, Mr. Tarazi has served the residents of Hilliard as an appointed and then elected member of Hilliard City Council, including one-year terms as council president and vice president, and whereas prior to being appointed to city council, Mr. Tarazi served on the city's Board of Zoning Appeals and has been the council representative for the Public Arts Commission, and whereas being a public servant can be demanding, we acknowledge and appreciate the support of Mr. Tarazi's wife Heather and children during his service to the community. Now therefore, the members of Hilliard City Council hereby present this proclamation to recognize Mr. Tarazi's service to the Hilliard community and wish him well in his future endeavors.
Thank you very much.
You can do Pete's or whatever you want to do.
Oh, I'll read.
However you want to handle it.
Then we'll go down.
That's perfect.
Okay. So Pete, whereas service to one's community as an elected official is a significant investment of time and reflects a personal passion for our city, and whereas representing the diverse needs, desires, and opinions of our residents is key to the success of Hilliard's council manager form of government, whereas we honor and recognize those who generously give their time and talents in pursuit of the ongoing improvement of our community, and whereas since 2018, Mr. Pete Marsh has served the residents of Hilliard as an appointed and then elected member of Hilliard City Council, including one-year terms as council president and vice president, and whereas prior to being appointed to city council, Mr. Marsh served on the city's Environmental Sustainability Commission and has served as the council representative to that commission, and whereas being a public servant can be demanding, we acknowledge and appreciate the support of Mr. Marsh's wife Beverly and his children during his service to the community. Now therefore, we, the members of Hilliard City Council, hereby present this proclamation to recognize Mr. Marsh's service to the Hilliard community and wish him well in his future endeavors.
Thank you very much, everyone, for that. I think it's been a real blessing serving this community, and we've had a lot of fun. I know there's been stresses, ups and downs throughout the year, but I think it's made us all better, better outcomes, and, you know, I had a great time and I really enjoyed serving with all of you. So as much as we may have agreed sometimes, disagreed, it's all good. You know, we all served our community as best as we could, and it was really a great year for me. So thank you, everyone. Moving on with the agenda. Let's see here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir. We have a public art.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. There's a public art rendering as the next item for the agenda. So can we have that be presented?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present Mr. Andrew Lundberg, who has designed this sculpture. We're hoping to locate it in the old Hilliard, in the Hilliard Station Park area, and I'm just going to let Mr. Lundberg describe it. The Arts Commission, Public Arts Commission, we are in support of this and we were bringing it to council, hoping that you'll support us in this endeavor. And without further ado, Andrew, please take over.
Good evening, council. So the image, the sketch, is a rendering. So when we finally get the final location, I'll do a full rendering of it, but this is the concept board. So if you see the images to the left, you can see that they punch through, so you can see the light from the inside. The idea is that cast light and shadow on the viewer. So the shape of this is almost like a stretched pyramid. There's eight panels to it. Each panel would have a different animal from the wildlife around the area. So horned owl, deer, maybe the bobcat, since I heard its back, and some of the floral of the area, too. So it's all stainless steel. It'd be roughly 10 feet high. We still need to determine that with where our placement is. In the middle will be a column of LEDs, so they'll be able to change and move, and hopefully even change with the viewer, so they can kind of interact with it. I don't know much more to say about it. A lot of the images on the left will kind of depict what I'm talking about. It's been done before in other cities. It looks beautiful, and I think we could make it unique by using some of the animals from our region, so, okay.
Any questions or comments from council?
Would you consider putting a panther, a jaguar, and a wildcat on there?
I'm supposed to say yes, I think.
No, 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 it doesn't work that way. You don't have to say yes to what he says. But I was thinking turkey and feral cat, though, but.
Oh, anything, yep.
Memories.
Anything but a turkey. Certainly. We haven't really decided on the actual.
Yeah, I'm sure. Any other comments from council?
I think it looks beautiful. What is the width that we're looking at?
I'm thinking it's roughly four to five feet, so, in width. And when it comes out to its final, so that's the base, right?
Okay.
You can see the base being four or five, and it comes out from there. We still need to determine actually where it sits, and I think that will help determine the size. But the bigness is important. I'd like it to at least be nine and a half to 10 feet tall, so it has some significance, yeah.
When are we planning on doing it?
As soon as we get it approved, I think. That's not my department. But we've been working on this for about three sessions now, yeah.
Good evening, council. We're still working through some of the particulars. We would like this to probably be located in Hilliard Station Park. We're looking at the setbacks with a easement for AEP, the power lines, trying to make sure that we have the placement right, so that we're able to go through it. We also need power at its final locations. That's one of the things that we're working through. So I think tonight that we're just looking for you guys' support to move forward with this project.
I have a question. So is the frame a stainless steel?
Yeah, it's all stainless steel sheet, yeah, and it's.
The panels there are also.
Correct, yeah, the whole piece is stainless.
Are they etched?
No, they're cut through, like laser, yeah. Which obviously, that's no corrosion, very little maintenance, and LEDs last for a long, long time. We've done a couple projects with LEDs and sculptures, and they're all still shining after years.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And this is probably for Ed more so than you, sir, but have we started planning or looking at art within the community center with the well?
It has been something that we've discussed. We haven't finalized anything. We wanted to get through GMP 6 to you guys this evening.
You want to get this first.
And then that's going to be one of the focuses looking.
But it's coming. Cool, thanks.
So on this project, though, I think it looks awesome. Anybody have any different feeling? Seeing none, looks like everybody's happy and giving a thumbs up. So go forth and make this awesome.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. There's one item on the consent agenda, 23-r-99, approving reappointment of the city's Shade Tree Commission. Would anyone like this item to be moved to the regular agenda for further discussion? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion and second to approve the consent agenda item by voice vote.
Still moved.
I can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It is now passed or approved. All right. This is the public portion of the meeting. Has anybody signed up to speak? Okay. So then we will move on to the business of council. First item is ordinance. We have one second reading hearing this evening. Will the clerk please read 23-29 by title only?
Prohibiting open containers of commercial quadracycles and amending section 529.07 in chapter 301 of the city's codified ordinances.
Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Does council have any further questions? Seeing none. Hearing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on 23-29?
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Will the clerk please read 23-r-100 by title only?
Approving GMP Amendment Number Six for the Recreation and Wellness Campus and authorizing the city manager to execute documents to approve GMP Amendment Number Six.
Is there a council member who'd like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved. Second.
Staff report?
Yes, I'll start this off. We have with us this evening our owner's rep, Don McCarthy. But before we get started, I know a few of you were able to take tours, I believe. One council member did last week and a few just today, and I think Rusili was excited to host all of you at that during those tours and get just a real good look at what's going on on the site. We do have a video we're going to show you this evening that will be released tomorrow morning, some incredible drone shots. And we'll start.
The new athletic complex also made big strides in 2023. This is the area at the southern portion of the property with a total of 20 athletic fields, two of which are full synthetic turf fields with lights, and as you can see, they've already been installed in recent weeks. The remaining fields will be grass fields for various sporting activities. By the spring, full grass should be grown in all of these areas. The parking lot for the athletic fields has also taken shape in recent weeks, as you can see the medians and curbings going in, and a shelter house is coming along that will include restrooms to service the athletic complex. The final piece of the campus focuses on environmental sustainability, specifically with the stream restoration project at Clover Grove Run, a protected wetland that separates Municipal Park and the new campus. In 2021, the city received a $600,000 grant to restore this area, and in 2023, improvements were made, including a widening of the stream's floodplain area, adding more natural plants, and meandering the channel to slow the erosion process. Plans are also in place to add a pedestrian bridge over the stream in the spring of 24. Another key feature to the campus is the installation of state-of-the-art stormwater management systems on both ends of the property. In October, Hilliard-based company Advanced Drainage Systems donated $500,000 worth of product to the campus. These yellow storm tech chambers collect, filter, and store stormwater underground, replacing retention ponds while benefiting our environment. As you can see, 2023 has been an incredible year of progress and sustainable growth at the new Hilliard Recreation and Wellness Campus, with much more to come in 2024 and a grand opening set for mid-2025. So, the road to recreation continues with a project that is sure to transform the future of the city of Hilliard.
Real amazing look at everything that's going on on that campus, and I think it'll be great to release to residents tomorrow, so they can get an idea of the scope and get excited about what will be opening in 2025. So with that, we do have GMP Number Six this evening. This is our last GMP, and I'll turn it over to Don McCarthy to give a quick overview of what's included in this.
Good evening, council. Hope everyone's well. Tonight, we have GMP Number Six. We had always planned on having six GMPs, I think, as everyone recalls. Initially, GMP Six was supposed to be just the OSU Wexner Medical Center, but we had some challenges with GMP Five, and we took a number of the bid packages that were slated for GMP Five, and we pushed them into GMP Six because we had some bidding and some budget issues to work through. We worked through those. I can say we successfully worked through those as a team. And so all of the targets that we expected to hit when we pushed those packages to GMP Six, we hit all of those targets and actually bettered them by about $346,000. So we were on the good side of what we expected to do. A lot of that had to do with, we also had some very, very strong bid coverage. Rusili kind of went back to the bidders that were part of the GMP Five initial and found some additional bidding competition. So that always helps when you have more competition for the bid packages that we put out. So GMP Six is in front of you for both the OSU component and the balance of the rec center. The OSU piece, I think everybody knows is a pass-through. They've approved their portion of that GMP amendment, $5.7 million. So we will be billing them on a progress payment basis, so as Rusili bills the city, we will bill OSU and will quickly get reimbursed for those funds associated with the TI of the work. Right now, on paper, OSU's portion of the project is scheduled to open about a month behind the rec center. The rec center is supposed to, is planned to open substantially complete in June of 2025. OSU's piece is July of 2025. OSU is very motivated to try to accelerate their work and get, when we have our grand opening, that their facility opens, their portion of the facility opens as well. We'll see how it goes. We've got a ways to go, but everything is, everything's come together nicely. It's been some heavy lifting initially with the site. The site was a bit more of a challenge than any of us anticipated. Thankfully, we're kind of finally out of the ground, and walls are going up, steel's going up, components, grass is growing. It's been, the video kind of stole all my thunder, so well done on the video side of things. But yeah, it's been, it's been good, and so we are, we're accelerating fast to get work going. Any questions that you folks might have?
I would echo, and I would, I think, speak for everybody, that fantastic video, fantastic work, and it's really impressive how far this project has gotten to this point. So thank you for everything that you're doing, but I'll open it up. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Go ahead.
I'll turn my green button on. We're now, this is the final GMP, right?
Correct.
Okay. What's the total cost of the well after this one's done? What's our, what are we in for? What did Hilliard pay?
Our projected costs for.
Don, I have that, if you want me to.
Right ahead. I've got all this paper in front of me.
So total project cost, and this includes the well, a couple of the alternates, including the adventure track and the expanded gym, the athletic fields, Cos Gray Road Extension, and the stream restoration. So the total is 106,361,000. Then we have to back out the grants that we were given, the donation by ADS. There's a sanitary line extension to Norwich Township, which we're paying upfront. They'll reimburse us. And then we're also factoring in some future availability of the Construction Management Contingency Fund. When you get to the end of all those and back those out, it's 99,135,208. And just, we have a, we have a working document that I'll send to all of council. We're still kind of working on this today. Really, what we've been trying to follow, too, is what's our additional funding that's going to be needed? If you recall, we borrowed $85 million. We're going to earn interest on that $85 million, of a little over 6.2 million. We're assuming to set aside some of that to pay down some of the debt payment, but we're also setting aside $3 million of that towards this capital investment. But at the end of this, we will need to figure out an additional funding of 11.135 million. We have some thoughts on how to capture some of that, but we knew when we started this project, we were going to have to go out and borrow a little bit more. And we were approved up to 95 million in borrowing, if you recall, as well, and to be able to retain our tripway bond rating. So that's the quick summary of that, but I'll get this to council, so you can see the full sheet.
Okay, nothing further? Okay, well, will the clerk please call the roll then on 23-r-100?
Vice President Vermillion? Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
All right, will the clerk, thank you very much.
One last thing, uh, Councilman Tarazi and Councilman Marsh, I want to thank you for all your help and support over the last, it's probably been two years. I can't remember when I first stood in front of you, but thank you both for all your help over the past two years, and look forward to seeing you here soon, um, out there at our our grand opening.
Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Clerk, please read twenty-three dash R dash one oh one.
Authorizing the transfer of unencumbered funds.
Is there a council member who'd like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Uh, staff report?
Good evening, members of council. Um, this piece of legislation is done every year around this time. Um, it's um, it would transfer unencumbered funds uh, within the general fund. Um, just wanted to point out that we're not increasing the the twenty-three budget operating appropriations. We're just transferring funds within the general fund. Any questions? I'm here to answer any.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on twenty-three dash R dash one oh one?
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier? President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Will the clerk please read twenty-three dash R dash one oh two by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Burgess and Nyble, Inc., for design of the FRA Cemetery Road SUP project and authorizing an expenditure.
Is there a council member who would like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, members of city council. Uh, so this is the design contract for the Cemetery Road Trail overpass. The total amount of this contract is one-point-five-five million dollars. The funds for this contract will be appropriated over three, three budget years. So twenty-five thousand dollars was included in the twenty-twenty-three capital uh, budget to kind of get the project started. Um, you already authorized one-point-two-two-five for the project for twenty-twenty-four, and then there'll be the balance that will be included in the twenty-twenty-five capital improvement project uh, budget to complete the project. Um, it's worth noting that we received uh, grants for the majority of this project, so the actual financial impact to the city for this project for the design phase is estimated about two-hundred-thousand dollars. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have a question. I I saw on, I don't know, one of these pages, project information i- is describing um, a tunnel under Cemetery Road to I two-seventy southbound, which is road traffic, right? Car traffic?
Yeah, so the tunnel will go under the ramp from Cemetery Road to southbound I two-seventy. Yes.
Okay, and then a pedestrian bridge that will go um, over two-seventy?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause wasn't it at one point going to be a pedestrian tunnel?
No, it's always been a tunnel under the free-flow ramp, a bridge over top of the freeway. Um, right now, we're gonna be exploring uh, whether we could tunnel under the northbound ramp as well and still stay within our project budget. So that's one of the phases of the project early on is to kind of look into that, whether that's feasible or not, um, and what the cost implications of that are. But um, otherwise, it would be an at-grade crossing at the signalized ramp, crossing at the northbound ramp.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on twenty-three dash R dash one oh two?
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Would the, will the clerk please read twenty-three dash R dash one oh three by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Insight Pipe Contract, the LLC, for CIPS dash thirty-seven sanitary sewer cured and placed pipe CIPP lining project, and authorizing the expenditure of funds.
Is there a council member who'd like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Uh, staff report?
Good evening, members of city council. Um, this is our annual sanitary sewer lining uh, project that we try to budget some dollars for every year. Um, we opened bids for this project on December first. Um, the project consisted of a base bid uh, for sewers in the Hillcrest area, and then we've learned from in the past, if bids come in lower than the engineer's estimate, that we have some dollars left. So we put in a alternate bid to spend those dollars if bids did by chance come in lower. Uh, we opened bids on Friday the first, and unfortunately, bids did not come in um, lower. They came in just about where uh, the budget number was. Um, it is awardable. The contract is awardable, but we would have had uh, very few funds left over for contingency um, out of the budget. We do have some, and that would have just allowed us to do the base bid only. Uh, we do have some funds, though, for twenty-twenty-three in the sanitary sewer lining televising and lining contract, or excuse me, televising and cleaning contract, um, that we did not use this year. Um, so we are, uh, we figured um, we could do all of the lining project plus the alternate if we were able to use those funds. Uh, we saw that as actually putting improvements in the ground and improving the sanitary sewer s- system rather than just doing some analytics and uh, the televising and um, contract offers. So, um, with that, we're requesting council's permission to use funds from both capital improvement projects to fund this project. Um, we would be able to line the sewers in the Hillcrest area and also uh, some sewers on the cul-de-sacs off of Westbrook.
Okay, any questions for council? Looking around?
Clark, we've now started this uh, water reprogram, stormwater program in the Hillcrest area to stop the basements from flooding?
The backflow prevention.
Backflow, but thank you. I couldn't remember what it was. Has that, has that all eased off, or is this gonna be the next step to cause that flooding to stop?
That program is still ongoing. I believe we've had maybe a couple residents in twenty-twenty-three take advantage of that. Um, but we still have some funds in the budget for that, um, if other residents would come forward and and request uh, first of all, an inspection by the city to see if they're uh, if if it's really a viable option for them, and then
And this leaving of these older sewers helps out water in those situations, right? This all adds up to a better outcome for those folks, right?
Correct.
Okay.
The lining program is based on um, structural deficiencies, we see. So as I had in the memo, it's class four and five structural deficiencies. They, we've identified those from some previous years televising contracts, and so.
And that all helps the cause.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Vice President.
Sorry, on twenty-three dash R dash one oh three, sorry.
That's right. Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Mr. Marsh? Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Uh, we have one more item, but Phil, can you help me out with this? Uh, what would the motion language be that we need to do to address uh, manage, City Manager Crandall salary issue?
I think it would just need to be a motion to direct uh, my office to prepare an addendum to increase her contract amount in the amount.
The motion is um, uh, can I have a motion to increase, uh, to direct the the Law Department to create an addendum that would increase City Manager Crandall's salary by six percent?
Still moved.
Motioned, second. I have a second. So any questions or comments, discussion? All right, seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier? President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Past seven zero.
Okay. Um, I would take a moment just to note that this was actually more than what was requested, uh, and that recognition that while, you know, we obviously had the, a year of differences of opinion, and while there was certain things that some of us think maybe were missteps or areas needed for improvement, it's also recognizes the unanimous consent of council that there was a tremendous amount of positive that happened and accomplishments and whatnot. So, um, and so congratulations and thank you for all your service to the community and your continued service to the community moving forward.
Thank you. I I really appreciate that. I appreciate all the positive uh, feedback, some constructive feedback, and um, you know, like I mentioned, uh, just accomplished some amazing things during twenty-twenty-three, and we have an incredible staff that I've been able to lead and um, help guide in that effort. So thank you to council for your consideration and for the uh, and for the amendment to my contract.
Okay, thank you. Um, any, any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Um, I'd like to wish everyone also a happy and safe holiday season. I believe this is our last meeting. Um, and the items for council discussion, we will talk about next year's agenda, so we'll cut that in a second, but hope everybody has a good holiday, safe holiday. Um, thanks again, everybody. It's been a lot of fun, and thank the staff. Um, you know, again, it's, it's been a great time, and and I'm so appreciative of the collective effort, uh, you know, in making our city awesome. So, um, Ms. Crandall, any updates?
Just one. So on December first, we had three of our police officers graduate from the Columbus Police Academy. Um, there's five class officer positions that are selected in each class, and all three of our officers were selected to serve as class officers. So we had Officer Trent Moreau served as secretary, Officer Mitchell Schlotter, Schlotterer? Thank you, Schlotterer, as treasurer, and Officer Michael Kelso as class orator. So out of a class of probably more than thirty people, every single one of our officers was honored and selected from among their class members as a um, as an officer. So I think that speaks highly of of our three officers that are coming out of there. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So now we, items for council discussion. Council has a list of twenty-twenty-four council dates. Is there any discussion on that point? Seeing none. All in favor of the proposed meeting schedule, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Nobody's opposed. All right. Does council have anything further to discuss?
One thing.
Go ahead.
I would like to take a short moment to recognize the passing of Phyllis Ernst. Phyllis Ernst was the director of Hilliard's Rec- Recreation and Parks Department for twenty-six years. She was very instrumental in the development of what our park system is today. Under her leadership, the city developed a thriving senior citizen, senior sitter, which was named after her in the late nineties. Phyllis was married to the late Will Ernst, who was a longtime teacher, coach, assistant principal, and athletic director at Hilliard High School. Phyllis and Will were dedicated leaders in the Hilliard community. They were enshrined in the Senior Citizen Hall of Fame in two thousand nine. I first met Phyllis and Will when I first moved to Hilliard in two thousand one. They were friends and mentors and helped teach me what made Hilliard a special place to live and raise a family. Rest in peace, Phyllis Ernst, and thank you for all you did for our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said. Um, any other comments? Our items for com- council discussion, last call? Okay. I would entertain a motion and second to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.